We will call this November 4th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Have the roll call, please.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, the minutes of Monday, October 7th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? That's moved by Commissioner George, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Anybody wishing to, any, any discussion on the minutes? Any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next item, any disclosures from the commission? Seeing none, we will move on to Special Order of Business Number Two. Informational item, case 2024-0114. Context-sensitive solution transportation project review for AMAT's Third Avenue signal and lighting upgrades from East Street to Cordova Street. This is not a public hearing. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Chair Spinelli. So there's no, there's no staff report, this is an information item. We had one, I think it was just about a month ago, the commission may remember where it's, this is the first in the three-step process for the CSS. So this is to introduce the project, inform the commission of issues, and then this will come back with the design study report that will have different alternatives. And at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission would vote on a resolution or make motions. So this project is for Third Avenue signals and lighting upgrades from East Street to Cordova Street. The commission may also remember in the, I believe it was about a year ago, maybe two years, there were some transportation projects for Fourth Avenue, so now this is Third Avenue. Project work may include sidewalk replacement, pavement replacement, and storm drain improvements. Some issues brought up include the electrical service systems and street lighting, how sidewalks are narrow or don't meet ADA standards, and pavement degradation. So that's, that's it for my staff report tonight, and the, a member of the project team is, is here to answer questions of the commission, but there's, there's no decision for the commission to make, strictly informative. Thank you.
Would, would the member of the project team care to speak? You gotta push buttons till you see a red light? There you go.
Oh, look at that. Chair Spinelli, my name's Will Webb, I'm the project engineer with KENI Engineering for this project. I have nothing to add, but am here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. If you just stay close, we'll ask the commission for questions. Question from Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, and before I get to ask Mr. Webb a question, I, I want to ask staff, will you remind us for the context-sensitive solutions reports, what the options are for how the commission might choose, request additional information, or, you know, how can we have input into this project as it goes forward?
Chair Krishna, I, I suppose any questions or comments you have tonight, they, they might keep in mind when they prepare the DSR, but there's no, since there's no decision for the commission, it would really be in the, the next phase, the design study report, when they have different alternatives, where the commission would either approve, approve with conditions, deny, I suppose you could also postpone making a decision. So it would really be, I guess, in the, the next phase, where you'd have more, a greater impact, I suppose.
I would just add to that, that during the Title 21 rewrite, I believe the entire intent of having this introduction was to get planning and zoning feedback. So now would be the time, if you had any, to lay it out there.
Sure. For Mr. Webb, my request would be that in the next phase, when this project comeback, comes back to us, a discussion of winter maintenance. As the person who plows the sidewalks with my team, I think it's important to consider, because five or six or seven months out of the year, we do have snow on the sidewalks, and whether we can take our Bobcat through or ATV does matter for what the sidewalk functions as after it's built.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. And as we move forward with the project, we will be doing outreach, both, I mean, with ADP and the local community councils and all the usual things, so I think we'll have ample opportunity to get feedback like that.
Sounds good. Next question, Commissioner Polis. All right, well, first comment, thank you for this informative packet. Talks about alternatives and a lot of the issues pretty good, I thought. Do you know the schedule of the speed change? Is someone doing a, a study for changing the speed that could line up with the project? Do you have a date for that?
Commissioner Polis, I do not have a date for that. There is a project ongoing, it's funded through AMAT's, I believe, it's the Downtown Streets Engineering Study, that's looking at speeds downtown, as well as a variety of other lane changes and directional changes and things of that nature throughout downtown. But I don't know the schedule for that project, nor any of the potential changes that could come about from that.
Thank you. Next question from Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Webb, good evening, appreciate you being here tonight. I'll try and preface my question with where my head is at around this whole context-sensitive solutions process, you know, understanding that there's intent to get feedback from PCC. So in that interest, understanding this is a signals and lighting upgrades project, I'm trying to keep that in top of mind, but also seeing things around sidewalks. And, you know, page 17 states that sidewalks that are removed facilitate modifications for electrical must be replaced to meet current standards. Then it talks about the DCM having eleven and a half foot sidewalks on minor materials, or at least that's the requirement in the Design Criteria Manual. And then, further on in the text, it states on page 20, given the scope of the project, not all the planning guidance can be implemented, specifically acquiring right-of-way, removing or removing travel lanes to accommodate sidewalk widening, and it carries on from there. So can you help the commission understand a little bit about how this project is going to balance what appears to be an identified need with the limitations perhaps of funding for this lighting, lighting project?
Yes, Commissioner Ron, this is definitely a topic that we've wrestled with on this. What the project can do is limited to, by the nomination that AMAT's approved in the funding documents, so that, that, that kind of drives, I guess, what, what we're doing with the project, which is why it's focused on signals and lighting. However, in trying to meet the downtown plans to the extent that we can, within those boundaries, you know, we've got to tear up the sidewalks to put in all the new electrical stuff, and then as we go through and replace those, we are widening the sidewalks as much as we can. So, for example, a lot of the lanes downtown are 12 feet wide, and I think the current standard is, is 11 in most cases, so we can narrow those up and add that extra space to the sidewalks, and that might not always get us to the standards in Title 21, but it, it moves us in that direction.
All right, next question from Commissioner George.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Webb, thank you for being here this evening. Yes, my question is in the same vein as Commissioners Krishna and Ron, with regard to the right-of-way and the sidewalk width, you know, we have an identified need for this here, you know, we've got signals that are identified as being 40-plus years old. Beyond simply replacing signals and pedestrian lighting, is there anything else more that can be done with this project? You know, I don't see discussion of whether the current width of the street itself and number of lanes is appropriate, I don't see traffic count and that sort of thing, and it's beyond the scope of this particular project, and I understand that, but we are talking about signalization. And so the load centers and what we're putting in place will be impacted by what's there. So there is still a tie together, in my mind. Just what is achievable in terms of sidewalk addition? Can we potentially have better snow clearing, as Commissioner Krishna mentioned? You know, is there maybe a need to reduce on-street parking in some places to achieve that sidewalk standard in the DCM, as was mentioned? Maybe that on-street parking has to go to some of the side streets in order to ensure that in this project? I'm just, some of the thoughts that have gone through my mind that hopefully maybe you can speak about. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner George, so the Downtown Streets Engineering Study that Commissioner Polis alluded to, that study, I believe, might be looking at, at lane reductions on some of the roads downtown. Well, it is looking at lane reductions on some of the roads downtown, I believe they've added Third Avenue to that. This project's a little bit awkward in that it's a municipal-owned facility, but AMAT's is federally funded, so DOT is, is involved. Technically, DOT is our client, but then the municipality owns the facility, so there's, there's some give and take going on here with the project overall. I believe for the project to look beyond just signals and lighting, it has to be re-scoped through AMAT's, and that would have to be driven by the municipality, whether it's, I, I don't know how much of the say the Planning and Zoning has in that, or if it has to come through PMNE or traffic, or how that exactly works. But I believe that if there's a desire to have the project look beyond just the signal and lighting and, and, and try to check some more of these boxes, that, that has to, that's a discussion that has to happen above, above my level, for sure, but more at the administrative level with the city.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback, and I guess my initial thought with that is oftentimes you only get one bite at the apple. And so if it's worth putting all of this time and energy and expending the funds, is it worth doing it right now or waiting 40 years more? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, just kind of a, maybe two points that are more comments than questions, but one, I understand there is an effort to update the DCM, so this project wouldn't necessarily, you know, be able to be included in whatever that turns out to be, but I understand we're looking holistically at that. And then, two, we do have a, a lack of pedestrian data available. I don't think I've ever seen up-to-date pedestrian count data for downtown, and I think it would be useful as we talk about what is appropriate. You know, it's hard to gauge whether a sidewalk needs to be updated when we don't know if there are 50 people or 500 people using it a day, so that would help us, I think, make more appropriate decisions with the resources that we have.
Yeah, thank you.
One final question. With, talking about sidewalks, and there's some topography in Third Avenue, have you dealt much with the 2% maximum cross slope? And I, it seems to be pretty common for me to see sidewalks go in and then get replaced a couple of months later, and then maybe one or two more times, because it's so difficult to achieve 2.00%. And I'm just curious, in Seattle, there, they have a policy that says if it's below 2.49, then that qualifies as 2%. And the municipality of Anchorage has yet to adopt a similar policy. I was just curious, as a design engineer on these type of projects, have you ran into that problem, and do you think that that, a policy like that might be appropriate solution?
Yeah, Chair Spinelli, I, I hadn't heard about the Seattle solution there, I'm gonna have to look into that, that's, that's interesting. But, so, we have been, our, our design team has been working on, on the Fourth Avenue grading that's been going on, and it, from Cordova, I think, to East Street's been constructed now. And we've learned a few things over the course of those projects. One is that we design from the outside in downtown, because we've got doors and, and we gotta match the back of sidewalk, and we have to use all of the right-of-ways. So as we design from the doorways toward the road, then that helps ensure that we have full control over the grading and it'll work. The other thing is that we design to 1.5% cross slope, so that gives the contractor a little bit of flexibility in case they, they can't hit it exactly as designed, there's still some float, still meet ADA. And then, the other, the other thing is there are a few pieces of flexibility within the ADA, where we just need to have a specific accessible area, and then some of the other parts of the sidewalk can have a steeper cross slope. So in the event that we, you know, really need it, there's, there's a fair amount of flexibility, but we do have to have really detailed design plans and a strong construction administration team onsite to make sure the contractor's building it that way, so, so we don't have to come back and fix it later.
So you're saying that you, you're batting a thousand on Fourth Avenue?
No, sir, I would not say that. Like I said, we, we learned a few things, we've learned a few things, I think we've, I think we've got a process dialed in now, but it, we, we did have to learn a few lessons.
All right. I see no more questions, thank you. Oh, one more from Commissioner Polis. Will correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe DOT's allowing 2.1-ish these days, aren't they? Isn't that the pro-eg thing?
Yeah, Commissioner Polis, the, I believe it's a 48 to 1 is the definition of accessible, so it's, it's not defined by percent, it's defined by the ratio, and that works out to slightly over 2%.
All right, I see no more discussion, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioner George, to your comments, if the commission was so inclined to pass a resolution, there's no saying that anyone would listen to us, but it would put comments on the record that could be distributed, so. We could probably take up our next case, and maybe you can ponder that one for later. Moving on to the consent agenda. I do not believe we have any resolutions to approve. No unfinished business. So that takes us to G public hearings, case 2024-0110. Can we please have this staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to point out that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors passed a resolution requesting the text amendment, the code change that's before us, planning supports GBOS's request. Currently, the Girdwood Commercial 1 and Girdwood Commercial 2 districts are the only two commercial zoning districts in Girdwood that prohibit mixed use. Currently, in the table of allowed uses, there's a blank in the cell for mixed use in these two commercial districts. This would add a P for permitted by right, so it's just making mixed use allowed in the only two districts that currently prohibit it. The Planning Department finds that the three approval criteria for a text amendment are met, and is recommending approval. State and municipal reviewing agencies have no objection. A draft assembly ordinance is enclosed. There's no difference between the draft assembly ordinance and Girdwood's request for this amendment. And also, on page nine of your packet, is an aerial map showing the location of these two zoning districts around the, the gas station on Stewart Highway, Aliaska Highway. Be happy to answer any questions, and we do have a, a member of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors here as well.
Commissioner Polis. Are there any existing developments in this GC1 and GC2 tract besides the gas station? The, the mall there?
I don't believe so, but maybe we could ask Mike Edgington in the audience when he comes up to testify. I don't believe so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. To Commissioner Polis's point, I believe the commission did hear, gosh, time flies, in the last year or so, DOT contact-sensitive solutions for the Stewart Highway interchange project, so I'd be curious to know what implication, if any, this might have on, on that type
I'll wait till Elizabeth comes back, she reviewed that project, but I, may I pass the question? Elizabeth, the question from Commissioner Ron was the proposed DOT interchange project in Girdwood.
Yes.
How would that affect mixed use being allowed here in these two lands?
Um, I can...
And you don't have to have an answer on the spot.
Yeah. Commissioner Ron, I, I don't think it would, if, I guess it's changing, so it'll allow mixed use.
It's a highway project.
Yeah, so it's a highway project, I mean, I, they've picked an alternative, because the DSR went to PCC. I've not gotten any additional information on the plans in hand, as far as I know, they're, they're awaiting funding, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know how soon that project would move forward. I don't think that this would affect that project at all, because they're still, it's a road project. So I guess my answer is I don't think that this change would affect that project.
Quick follow-up, was DOT one of the reviewing agencies for this case?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
All righty, I see no more questions for staff, so we will open public hearing, and I will read the procedures. By way, the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, one, after staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules and procedures. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Representatives of groups, PTAs, community councils, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the Planning Director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record a written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103050A4A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. All righty, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name for the record, and let us know if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or a group. Yep, there you go.
That's better, now there's a light. I'm speaking as petitioner.
Okay, then we'll back up and have the petitioners' presentation.
Thank you.
Usually they give me a cheat sheet. Paul stepping in.
I mean, I, I guess I could do it under one of three different conditions, so. Yes, my name is Mike Edgington, I'm co-chair of Girdwood Board of Supervisors, and also supervisor for Housing and Economic Development. This is a fairly simple and narrow request, so much better than the last time I was here. So I'm just going to briefly say why it's here in front of you, and then perhaps address a couple of the questions that were asked earlier. So as you probably know, we're going, with, Girdwood is going through a comprehensive plan rewrite, that should be in front of the assembly in the next few weeks. There are many changes which are coming from that, including significant changes to zoning. So I guess one of the questions is why are we doing this now? The reason we're doing this now is we expect it to take a year or two, optimistically, to go through the zoning changes, and this is a, a kind of glaring problem today. There are a number of, of owners of land in GC2 in particular, who have expressed interest in, in sort of helping with, in many cases, their own, their own businesses are providing some housing, and of course, they're prevented from doing so because mixed use is not a accepted use in that area. GC1 is mostly owned by a mental health trust, they have also expressed an interest in the past before the, the highway interchange project came along, which delayed things, in potentially doing some building there, which would also involve mixed use, and again, they had a question about how that could be done. So we know there is interest in having some mixed use development there, and we would rather go through the process now and make that an option, and then when we go through eventual zoning update, we will, we will incorporate that into the zoning update. One benefit of going through the comprehensive plan process, we've had many people in the community look at land use maps and think about how use should be in the future, and it's very clear that mixed use is something the community sees in that area. So you will notice one other change in the code, is there was a sentence in the description of GC1 and GC2 that said, "Any residential development is not suitable for the area next to Stewart Highway." That is not the community's opinion 20 years later. So we have plenty of evidence that the community is, is comfortable with mixed use there, and this would be a way of getting it there. In answer to one of the questions about whether there's any other development in GC1, GC2, at the moment, there is no permanent development, there are many temporary uses. This, I think, would give the option of having some more permanent development in that area. And I think the other question I heard was about the highway, and again, I know there was some intent to investigate some projects in the GC1 area. The highway, potential highway changes delayed that. My understanding is there's no proposal for the highway to occur. In the STIP, I think it's pushed out to the very, very end, so there's no likelihood of funding appearing in the next, you know, eight years or so. That's my current understanding. So I don't think that's an imminent issue. Happy to take questions, and I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Any questions? I see no questions. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please step forward, state your name, and let us know if you're speaking for yourself or a group.
I am speaking for myself, my name is Amanda Tuttle. I am a landowner in GC2. Additionally, I am also the owner of Coast Pizza. I have significant staffing issues within Girdwood, I can't even keep my doors open, they're, it's closed today for the whole month. Staffing is incredibly difficult. This is, this is actually a very simple fix, like Mike said, it's just a P for allowing permitting. It's not only going to allow for me to hopefully start solving some of my own problems, but I don't even have a house in Girdwood. I would like to have a house, I've lived in Girdwood 20 years, I would love a bedroom door. I live in a studio, I call it my torture chamber. But there's, it's, there's also bigger issues than that, too, and that's also that we have issues with old Girdwood, just kind of, we've been written out of our own land use planning. And actually, within GC2, which is only one block, so old Girdwood is completely dyked in by public infrastructure, and we're only about six blocks in total. So that one GC2 block actually does have, and has had for about three decades now, two standalone housing units on it. So we're not, you know, allowing this permitting is doing nothing different than what's already currently going on in GC2. Anyways, would greatly support, I appreciate if you guys would help myself. There's one other business owner in the Girdwood Shopping Center, Nico, who owns in GCT, GC2 as well. Between the two of us, we own over 50% of that block, and everybody is in favor. I mean, Nico will love staffing, too, he's of the retirement age, and doesn't want to work as hard as he's working. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I see no questions. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please step forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Oh, excuse... Mike, would you like to rebut? Okay. Well, we are closing the public hearing. What is the will of the body? What is the will of the body? Commissioner Polis, would you like to state your motion?
Yes, I move to approve a request by the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend to the Anchorage Assembly an ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code subsections 210904O zoning districts and 210905O use regulations to provide for additional mixed use development within Girdwood Valley.
Thank you. That is seconded by Commissioner Eber. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. The subject case seems to meet the approval criteria discussed in the packet. We haven't seen any public or agency objections. I feel a real need that Girdwood has the residential, you know, criteria, that they need more housing. I get that. And it was specifically requested by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. So I don't, I see no problem with this motion.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, I mostly just want to thank the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for bringing this forward. I think this is the first time we've seen this process before, planning and zoning, although we've heard about Girdwood's housing challenges for many years. So I think this was a great process. I hope it was easy for G-Boss to work through. But I think this is how we get to the code that we want, right? As Girdwood has its own chapter and your community is best, in the best position to bring forward specific changes that you think would make your community better. So I'm just happy to see that and want to encourage you to bring more text amendments forward if there's a need for them.
I see nobody else wishing to speak to the motion. I will just add, second Commissioner Krishna's comments and I would also encourage you to fix more sections of the Girdwood code. Call for the vote. The motion passes. So that concludes our agenda. We will go to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Krishna.
Sure. I understand there's a special meeting or an additional PCC meeting on November 18th and I was just hoping that Francis could give us a little preview of what's on the agenda then.
Through the chair, yeah, the Planning Department is drafting a review and report of an assembly ordinance that was introduced at a meeting and scheduled for a public hearing in late December. And they've referred an ordinance that they wrote and introduced to the commission. It'll be a public hearing. And yeah, so I guess at your guys' next meeting, there'll be a case based on an assembly ordinance.
Sure, and I'm mostly bringing this up because I was CC'd on an email about this, although I didn't engage in any discussion on this case. So I just wanted to make sure the entire commission had a chance to hear about this. I understand the intent is to prevent future special limitations from being possible, if that's a fair way of putting it. So just a preview of what's to come.
Okay, Commissioner George, have you pondered your question from earlier?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, just depending on the will of the body, I would be happy to make a motion if there's sufficient support. You know, there seems to be questions that were raised by fellow commissioners about some of the items that are listed on page 20 of the contractor's report. Acquiring right-of-way, removing travel lanes, accommodating sidewalk widening, street trees, snow clearing and that sort of thing that are not being addressed yet are all laid out in this report as needs. So the motion would be as simple as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that AMATS and PMNE consider reexamining the project's current scope and whether it may be appropriate to expand it to include concerns identified during the November 4th meeting.
All right, Commissioner George has made a preliminary, a sneak peek at a possible motion and we're now looking for some comment on whether we should really go through it or not. Commissioner Ron.
At this point, do we need a motion laid on the table in order to discuss? Because what I have to say is in direct relation to...
Technically, if we wanted to be official, that would be the route, keeping all things on record.
I would be happy to make the motion for purpose of discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We will wait just a second for Paul to get the motion typed up and then you can make it official.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. It does seem like a procedural error. Commissioner comments.
Yeah, I think we should have added to this. I don't know if this is going to be... I guess we could have added it to our...
Commissioner comments, because the assembly doesn't pass resolutions during appearance requests or...
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I think this is probably a procedural error. I mean, what's going to happen is we're just going to, like, send a video to PMNE or something, right?
Yeah. I wonder if, because this has never happened before. I don't, I don't know if I would let them assign recommendations for it or anything. Can we call it, isn't it?
It's just an information I don't...
Right. Do you need your notes back to restate the motion?
I give full latitude to the chair and to the staff to conform...
I don't, I can't read that person.
Simply to, the commission would recommend that AMATS, PMNE and the appropriate bodies consider revising the scope to address the concerns in the report and raised by the commission.
All right, that is the motion. It's seconded by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Chair. Fellow commissioners, I think I share the interest in moving toward a resolution on the matter. However, I'm hesitant in doing so as currently worded. My interest is that of kind of a go-forward that doesn't delay this project and the immediate need that the specific funding allows for with respect to lighting upgrades and signalization. The resolution that I would put forward or amend the current language is just that. It's one that asks the appropriate bodies involved in the project to not preclude future improvements that address the other concerns not allowed for during this project by funding constraints. Put another way, let's spend this money wisely now in a way that doesn't cause excuse for not doing more next time, if that makes sense.
Commissioner George, how do you feel about that sneak peek at a proposed motion to amend?
I certainly appreciate my fellow commissioner raising the concern that we don't want to lose funding as well as time invested in the process. Ranking projects, getting on the lists, getting the public comment done and getting a, you know, design report and where we are with CSS is very time-consuming. And going back to the drawing board could certainly prevent this from being done for several years and also somehow assumes that we're going to have a funding source that's adequate to even do the project. So I certainly don't want to give up the achievable in search of the perfect. I am, as I said before, completely open to the will of the body. Whatever the commission is comfortable with, I would be happy with a motion to substitute the motion. That's fine.
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you, and I support Commissioner George's initial intent and would actually clarify. This motion is a recommendation. It's not a finding. It's not a resolute. It's strictly a recommendation that we would like to see, or down the road in the future, those items that we discussed to be incorporated into the design element down the road. We're not burying anything on the budget. We're not hamstringing them. We're not curtailing them from doing anything. We're just giving our recommendations as a body of additional information that might be helpful down the road. I don't think we're taking control of the process itself. Remember, this whole purpose here, it's not a, it's not a public hearing. It was for informational only. So all we're doing is saying, "We're giving you some ideas for some additional information to look at down the road to incorporate." So I think we need to look at it in that context, which I think we were initially. But, you know, we don't control the process here.
I would second all of that. I mean, they, Title 21 put this meeting in place for a reason and all we're doing is putting some ideas in writing. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. I won't name the commissioner by name, but I do believe there is a representative on this body that does liaise with AMATS and if they would be willing to provide some insights.
So due to staffing on that commission, it's been, it's called the Citizens Advisory Commission and it's been kind of waylaid for the last year. So we haven't met in about three-quarters now, so, no.
With that discussion, I'm willing to support the, what I understand the motion to be and its intent. And there will be future opportunity for me as a commissioner to put forward other motions that, as I see fit. So I intend to support the motion as it's currently stated.
Alrighty, I see nobody else in the queue, so we'll call for the vote.
Send the minutes to, to the video and the minutes.
Hold now, there's...
Okay, well, when the video will be out tomorrow, when the minutes come around, we'll look at each other and one of us will, you know, forward this to whoever the project administrator is.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not doing that.
So, okay, I see what you're saying, that it would just...
I mean, this is not a choose and...
Yeah, so we reflected in the minutes, it might pass that along, but there wouldn't be government, we'd have to get it, you know, I mean, yeah, that makes sense.
And then looking down the line, when the DDSR comes in, plans in hand, those things, it's... I don't, I mean, we could maybe include the minutes as background information, potentially, so they don't feel like we ignored it or something.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's going to be cognizant of it.
Yeah.
But I don't think we'll express it as different part of the resolutions in the next meetings, I think.
Yeah, I agree with that. You guys have fixed it to the appropriate two.
All right, let's call for the vote. Motion passes and now, anybody else have any comments? Any Commissioner comments before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Commissioner George is in the queue.
I don't normally do this, but I just, I found it interesting with our item tonight that we had a public hearing on, that we now can have residential in, I think, all Girdwood zonings. Effectively, we have housing anytime, anywhere in a community that truly has a housing crisis. So I'm not sure if that's the direction we're going in the rest of municipality, but seemed like it sailed through this evening and maybe it's just a harbinger of things to come. I don't know, just an observation. Thanks.
I will, oh, Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, I have one last one. I was watching an assembly work session on one of the land use items last month and I heard a pretty interesting comment from an assembly member saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission had three months to weigh in. They could if they chose to. This is not an item that came before us. I forget which specific item it was, but the assembly has passed a number of Title 21 text amendments in the last couple of months or introduced them. So I guess I just want to ask if the commission... I bring that up because it was not something that came up to us at our meeting, right? And we can't necessarily weigh in if we don't hear about something. So I just want to ask if there's a general interest by this commission in some sort of update could be written, it could be at a meeting about land use actions that the assembly is taking so that if we choose to, because that is totally within the scope of this commission, we could weigh in and provide an opinion, right? Or a recommendation or an amendment or any other, you know, action that we might take. I do think there are quite a lot of ordinances being introduced, especially this month, that relate to Title 21. I think it's within this commission's purview to be part of that process if we choose to. But if they aren't cases, we don't necessarily have a way to do that, right? Or we send each of us out to do a whole bunch of legwork and then come back with some resolutions prepared. So I guess I just want to not belabor this meeting too much longer, but just bring that up because I think it's a pretty important part of our role and I wanted to see how people would like to move forward.
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. I think that is an important and critical element. Unless we know about it, we can't respond, we can't act, we can't make any motion one way or another. How are we going to find out this information? It's a rhetorical question. We have to be told. Do we incorporate that into a line item in our weekly, in our meeting agenda that it's a question that gets asked at every meeting of the staff to say, "Have there been any recent passage at the assembly level?" And it becomes informational to us and which we expect then to be updated for that information. And then, you know, we, and you made a comment, "We have three months or 90 days to respond." And by the time that would even come about, we may be three weeks behind the schedule already. Or if we didn't meet, we may be a month behind. But I applaud you bringing that topic up. I just figured out that we've got to get a system in place, if we're going to move forward, how we're going to be informed.
Well, we're heating up over here. Commissioner George.
Thank you, and I applaud the courage of my fellow commissioner for raising this topic because it has been brewing for some time. And I think there is a strong desire of everyone who shows up here as a volunteer several times a month to give our very best to improve our city. And so there are subject matter experts on this commission who have been selected, appointed, vetted and confirmed by the elected members of our city to address these issues. And Title 21 seems to be at the center of all of this. But yeah, I have witnessed a little bit of this as well and it does give me a bit of pause, you know, when we have meetings that are 15 minutes long because we don't have any cases, but there are three, four or five ordinances being introduced at the assembly that are quite impactful. You know, I get newsletters from members of the assembly that represent our community and I won't name the individual, but they said that there are three ordinances before the assembly currently having to do with special limitations, multifamily housing and B3 and a two-year pause on residential design standards with plenty of time for... and B3, and a two-year pause on residential design standards, with plenty of time for Planning and Zoning Commission comments and community review. And if it's going to be taken up in December, and it's November right now, I wonder what communities are reviewing it, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission hasn't seen it. So, I think maybe there's a disconnect in the messaging. So, it's also incumbent upon us to help with that. And so, I think maybe just an olive branch might be appropriate. Thank you.
I have two more people in the queue, but I guess I want to just add something real quick that might inform some more of comments or respond to some of the comments that we've heard thus far. When I was asked to attend an Assembly work session or a committee session and give a report from P&amp;Z, I heard the, "Oh, we were waiting for P&amp;Z to weigh in on this" comment. I then made comments to the Planning Director at that time about requesting that P&amp;Z be informed on things pertaining to P&amp;Z's scope of work that might not be coming to us formally. There wasn't much response to that. I believe we now have a new Planning Director. I don't know if anybody knows about that, but like typically, it seems like something that might be told to us, but hasn't been. So, I guess I just wanted to kind of lay that out there as, like, we, I have been requesting this kind of stuff as the Chair, and maybe we might see something different in the future, but that was, I just wanted to throw that out there before we continue on. Commissioner Eber.
I think I just want to, I guess, follow up on what both you and Commissioner Strike said, that like perhaps we can get something each meeting that says like what happened in the previous, like almost an agenda from the Assembly, so that we know what's happening, I guess, without having to do it ourselves. So, like, when our packets come, we have what's been done by the Assembly, or what's coming up with the Assembly, just a thought. But, I mean, if you've already asked them, it's like being worse. I don't know.
Commissioner Ron.
Really appreciate this healthy discussion, and it's poignant and timely, if not a little bit delayed. My understanding is that some of the processes being enacted at the Assembly level are, in the moment, laid-on-the-table items. So, you know, getting in front of those kinds of things, I'm not sure how we can best do that without setting up additional lines of communication that are preemptive between this Commission, the Planning Department, and the Assembly. And I think that's going to take more thought than what we can accomplish here tonight, but how can we push this forward from our perspective? Do we need to formalize something to get over to the Planning Department, saying, "Here are our concerns, carry them forward," or do we go directly to the Assembly? What are the mechanisms that we need to put in place?
Real quick, before we go to Commissioner Krishna, I just will, I will add that at the, it was the Rules Committee work session, there was a lot of talk about a joint meeting or some sort of work session for the Assembly and Planning and Zoning Commission. I think the initial was to review the Planning Department work plan, which may be in the works. Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, I have a bit of a suggestion in response to Commissioner Ron's concerns, which would be that I think it'd be wise, at least as we get our legs under us, to limit our kind of, our opinions or our resolutions to items that have been, ordinances that have been introduced to the Assembly, so that they're already on the public record. And second, I think the other piece that we don't often get is, for example, there was a site access report that was commissioned and even put in the public record at the Assembly, but we never saw it, right? Even though we got the site access case initially. So, just things that are already in the public record, if they could be also introduced into the record of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that we've got a mechanism to weigh in on them.
And then I want to go to Staff to ask if they might have anybody they want to introduce or anything.
So, the one comment I heard was, you know, "We want to get ahead of the situation." I don't think we're trying to get ahead of it. It's already been acted upon, the Assembly is already moving forward, but my concern is that we're being used as a false narrative, in which it is being pointed out that the, "This must be okay, the Planning and Zoning had 90 days to inject, or 60 days to inject on it, and they didn't." And that's the false narrative that I'm concerned that is being used, or could be used, and we become a scapegoat, when we had no knowledge or visibility to what the action was to begin with, because it didn't come. But if they're going to use us as a tool, I just want to make sure that we're knowing, that we know that that's what we're being used as. So, knowledge is important here.
I haven't heard of anything that led me to believe that we are being used as a tool or a scapegoat. I just throw that out there. Commissioner Krishna, did you, was that the tone of anything you heard?
I think that, I mean, I think I guess I would just remind us that we are, we have some judicial functions, but we're also an advisory commission, right? So, we get to do both.
Ms. Appleby.
I wanted to, I have the pleasure of introducing you to the acting, the new Acting Planning Director, May Lisa Bab. I don't know if she'll speak, but she is very newly working with the Planning Department. She's only a few days on the job, and she hasn't been appointed yet. She's been nominated, and we have the pleasure of working with her, and she's here, you know, investigating, listening to the meeting.
Commissioner Spinelli, may I speak to the body?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to introduce myself and to let you all know that I am here. I'm hearing your concerns, and I look forward to working with you on some of these issues that you're voicing this evening.
Thank you, and I see nobody else in the queue. Are we ready to...
Can I, can I just suggest that we add an item to our agenda, even if it's frequently empty, that just says... Somebody think of a good title. But yeah, essentially, like, updates on, like, relevant legislation or something like that.
I'd like to speak to that. I don't necessarily, I think we need a formal report, like, maybe it's one page, but when the Assembly is changing Title 21, I would appreciate it mostly for when ADN calls me for my comments on Title 21 cases, and I'm going, "I know nothing about it." Like, just because I'm the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't mean they run all Title 21 things through me. I've never even heard of this. Yes, it affects my business. Yes, I wish I knew about it, but I'm in, as in the dark as anybody. So, I think that when Staff hears about it, we should know what Staff knows. I don't think that that's too much to ask, assuming that Staff knows, and if Staff doesn't know, then maybe when Staff hears about it, we need to inform us to reach out to the Assembly so they can inform us. And can, I guess, can you guys speak to that, how that might work?
I don't have a comment on that.
Commissioner Spinelli, we don't have a comment on that right at this moment, but we are in process, in discussion with the Administration on this exact issue, and I hope to have something to you soon. I'm sorry I can't be more specific on that, but we are in discussion about this exact issue.
Thank you, and I think we just want to know that we're something, the problem has been identified, and good people are working towards a solution.
Yes, we definitely have a good crew working hard on solving this issue. Just so we can leave here with some action done, I would like this added as a standing item on our agenda.
Oh, okay.
Do I need to?
I kind of feel like, I don't know how you do it without doing it that way.
May I give a point of information, Commissioner Krishna, through the Chair? The agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission is set by code, so it's not something that can be easily changed.
Well said, I mean, it's accurate.
Maybe we'll take that up as our next resolution in our next meeting. Thank you.
Friendly suggestion, if I may. The existing agenda, which is, I believe, set by code, has five "other," so maybe we could just pull "other" on the consent agenda.
I guess my suggestion would be that we keep this top of mind, and hopefully Staff will have a solution soon. And maybe Commissioner Krishna can be patient enough for the new Planning Director and the Staff shake up to get their legs under them. Maybe. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but I feel like we've hashed it out. Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Any objections? Seeing, hearing none.